The meeting will come to order and we'll have roll call.
Harris?
Yes.
Knapper?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
Reisig?
Here.
Blue?
Here.
I skipped an item, the public information, a copy of the open meetings law and act is back on the back wall, on the east wall, if anybody needs to see that or read that, it's back there. Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, a couple of announcements or things that I'd like to mention before each meeting. I want to remind all that this meeting is being recorded, not live, but it will be broadcast at a later date. So remember that whoever wants to speak, once they're recognized, you'll need to come forward and to the podium and speak into the microphone. You also need to give your name for the record and spell your name, which helps the county clerk have appropriate records. Remember, there's no swearing or no inappropriate language or inappropriate subject matter as far as that goes. We all need to check our cell phones, try and be sure that yours is off or on silent, so we don't get interrupted or the least amount possible. Want to remind commissioners as well that we need to speak directly into the microphones so that the recordings can pick up what we're saying, and it also helps some in the audience hear what's being said as well. We'll see how the meeting goes tonight. We normally take about an eight-minute break, somewhere hour and a half into the meeting or so, we'll see how that goes and if I feel that myself or one of the other colleagues up here need a break, then we'll take a break. I think that's it for my announcements. The next item is approval of the agenda and consider any modifications. Ask if anyone wants to change anything on the agenda. Right, hearing none, I entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the agenda as printed.
Okay, well, we have a motion to approve the agenda as distributed. Is there a second?
Hold on a second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
You have five yeses.
All right, the agenda is approved as presented. The next item is the board reserves the right to enter into a closed session if deemed necessary. And I did have our attorney, Jason Ocean, call me this afternoon and said that we are going to need to add an executive session at the end of the meeting concerning litigation, and we'll go into executive session later for that. But if, for some reason, he feels that we need to go into executive session, otherwise we reserve the right to do that. Okay. The next item is the consent agenda, and so this has several items, and it's intended to act on all of these items with one motion unless one of the commissioners want to consider one of these items separately. So I would ask if anyone would like to consider anything separate. And if not, is there a motion?
I move that we accept the consent agenda.
There a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
You have five yeses.
Okay, the motion's carried. All right, we'll go on to the next item, which is board of equalization. We'll need a motion to go into the board of equalization.
I'll make a motion, go into the board of equalization.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second to go into the board of equalization. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
You have five yeses.
Motion's carried. So the first item is discuss and consider approval of five motor vehicle exemptions for VSL gearing.
All right, so tonight I have five vehicle exemptions for VSL gearing. They applied for nine, four of them do not have motor vehicle tax, so they are not tax exempt. The total tax loss is $347.60. It says that they are a nonprofit LLC with a single member veteran senior living. It's a nonprofit that engages primarily in public charitable functions in its ownership of skilled nursing, assisted living, and home health and hospice facilities and agencies. The vehicles noted above are used exclusively in the purpose of providing these services as part of their nonprofit operations and healthcare. I would recommend approval, they were exempt last year.
Part of their organization is tax exempt, part of it isn't, and this is the tax exempt part?
Yes.
I'll go for approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the tax exemptions for VSL. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
You have five yeses.
Motion's carried. The next item is to receive the tax list corrections.
If we approve taxes, corrections are submitted. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
You have five yeses.
Motion's carried. Need a motion to go out of board of equalization.
I'll make a motion, we go out of the board of equalization.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to go out of board of equalization. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote.
You have five yeses.
All right, motion's carried. All right, we'll go to the next item on the agenda, which is the weed authority. Have several items here, Steve Baird is here and...
Okay, good afternoon. You remember back in January, we submitted our annual reports to the Department of Ag? Had to be in by January 31st. They emailed us back our grade, if you want to call it, our report card with that. On that first sheet, I think everybody should have had a letter from Trevor Johnson, the Department of...
Speak up, Steve, I'm in the back, can't hear you.
Everybody in the, could have got a letter from Trevor Johnson, the Department of Ag director. In there was our report card about our reports that we filled out and submitted. I will just go through those quickly, the results. He had in there the inspections for survey results, you know, we got a perfect score on is what that is, is the inspections we do, making sure that they're signed and the, we have some pictures to accompany him, that sort of thing. The next one, our county follow-up, we got docked 75 points on that. So what that is, is we had eight open files with the NDA, I did not know we had them, we've had them since 2020. Those are the county follow-ups they're talking about. So as of now, I have followed up on those this spring and sent letters to those people to see if we can get those areas cleaned up. So hopefully with next year, with the county follow-up score will come up. Our office evaluation was done in November, I believe, we got 950 out of 1,000 for that. We got docked 50 points, I had to add another category to my license, another test. So they give you six months to do it, but yet they dock you 50 points if you don't have it. So I'd taken that now, I have that now, so that'll be better for next year too, another 50 points. As you go down through there, it has a roster, we got a perfect score for the roster, that of course is myself and you guys listed as the weed authority. Budget, which is on the little budget sheets, that is simply how much of a budget for the year we had previously and then funded for the next year. That was a perfect score on that one. The next one is the activity report, we got docked 10 points on that one. I left, actually on the activity and infestation report, the next two, we got docked a total of 10, it looks like 32 points, and that's just because I either didn't put a zero in a line or they dock you for not putting zeros in. So, and then on the control plan, that was probably the hardest one, and I just wasn't specific enough on our control plan in certain areas, they wanted a more detailed answer to set in their deals. And you guys should have all got copies of those, I think they sent them to you, and then I sent you another copy of those too. So that's...
Steve, what is the, what is the threshold on that? If you reach a certain low, you don't get funded, or what?
The Department of Ag gives us no funding, so it just shows that you could be in violation of the state statute of the Noxious Weed Act.
Okay, what are the total points that you could receive?
3,400, and we had 2,993.
Okay, so we're good.
So, yeah.
So what is the lowest?
I do not know what the lowest threshold is. We don't want to know either, no. But we'll get, you know, even if I did the paperwork, we're going to get another 250. Continuing education was a big 200-point one, like I mentioned to you guys earlier, I did not get all the 20, 20 hours, I didn't start till June and only attended one continuing education last year, so that'll go up this year too, I've already done my 20 hours.
A lot of these would be corrected by the next year.
Right, so, you know, just in general alone, 250 more points next year is going to get us up to like 3,200 out of 3,400. And that's just for the continuing education and the extra deal, extra ag I had to add on to my license, so. And they just want you to, supposed to discuss it between the weed authority and ourselves, as it said in the letter, and then they want Mark's signature on the, on the letter to know it was discussed.
Okay.
Ken had a question in there about if we'd lose funding, I don't believe we get any funding from the State Department.
No, we do not get, we do not get any funding from the Department of Ag, no. So this is all, weed department is all budgeted by tax dollars.
Local tax.
Yes, local tax dollars.
So you've already, prior to this meeting, had told us about your continuing education requirements and the fact that you'd only been in that position for less than a year and some of the stuff wasn't available to you, so we'll have that corrected the next year.
Correct.
Already corrected it.
Correct.
And so to me, it looks like, looks like we're headed in the right direction and looks like we would be in pretty good shape for next year's report card, so to speak.
Yes, I would agree.
Any other thoughts or questions concerning this, this portion?
I'll go for approval of the report.
There a second?
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second to accept the report and approve it, and then I'll be signing it to say we discussed it here, so. Any other discussion? If not, we'll go ahead and vote.
You have five yeses.
Motion's approved. Okay, so you're up again, Mr. Steve, for several items here, discuss and consider resolution delegating authority to the weed superintendent.
Okay, so these next four items are all things that were brought up a week ago when I was in Norfolk for the weed training. The Madison County attorney was there, gave a kind of a lecture and some other weed superintendents about if we want to enforce 10- and 15-day notices upon people to spray, and if, you know, if you do do that, then they go through a fine period and legal stuff. And they suggested that we have a resolution stating that the weed authority, which is you guys, designate the superintendent the authority to issue those 10- or 15-day notices. Otherwise, that falls on you as a group to issue those notices. That's what the first one is. All four of these, I guess I should say, or I was hoping that the attorney would okay all these before the meeting, but he was, didn't get it done, so. For now, we can just discuss them, if you still want to go that way, I'll bring them back at a later date under the weed authority and we can approve them, but we can certainly still discuss them. If it's not ways you want to go, then that's fine too.
Would there be any difference when you bring them back?
The one with the resolution, first one, the difference is, it says county weed district board in there, statute that calls it authority, so they're wondering if there isn't some terms that should be switched in the very first one in the resolution. And they did not get ahold of me today to actually tell me yes or no.
So, were you asking Jason's office, or were you asking Dave?
Dave and the Nerma, Nerma Legal Link is who I was told to call Brandy there. I talked to her Friday and she apparently didn't have enough time to...
Look at it.
To look at it, so. So both of them, so, and they were going to, she said she would tag Dave in the emails and I did not see them, so they must, just probably didn't get it done, so.
So...
So, I mean, if that's the way the board wants to go with these, and once we get the wording correct, as far as board or authority with that, I can bring this back, bring that back at that time for approval.
Okay. These forms were submitted to you from state?
These forms I actually got as templates from Hall County, this is what Hall County uses, yes, so.
Well, I don't know if any commissioners or Jason, if you have any opinion as to whether or not we should let our legal people look at these and just give their blessing before we approve them, are we under any kind of a time deadline or anything?
No, there's no time deadline for this, so. I was just in hopes that, since I already had the other item on the agenda, hopefully they'd give the okay and I could get this done at one meeting and I'd have to come back, but that didn't work out, so. Yeah, I mean, it just brings it to your attention, if there's something here that you don't want to pursue, this is the time to discuss that too.
Sure. Well, yeah, that's...
Out of all of these, Steve, which ones are you going to get reviewed by the county?
Excuse me?
Out of these, which ones need to be, have to have further review?
Both resolutions.
Just the resolutions?
Yeah, just the resolutions.
Okay.
The other one is a fee schedule, the other, the county set for this, that they double their rates if they have to do an enforced control, and that includes if you hire a contractor to go do it too, that the rates are doubled. There's administrative fees or management fees in there and that thing, sort of stuff, so.
So we need to take action, to table the third one and then take action on the last one when it gets to effect, right?
Yes, if you want to keep them all together at the same time, we can certainly table all of them and do them all next time if you want, that'd be fine, yeah, there's no timeframe on this.
I would move that we table, we table the last four until we get the, review of the first one.
So we have a motion to table the last four items under weed authority until these items are reviewed by council. So we have a motion, did we get a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to table those items. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
You have five yeses.
Motion's carried. Thanks, Steve. Okay, so we'll move on on the agenda to the general agenda items. First one is discuss and consider Scotts Bluff Area Visitors Bureau's strategic plan. Chuck Heeman from the Tourism Advisory Committee Executive Subcommittee.
All right, hey, thank you for the time. You've got my name on the agenda, I can spell it again if you like.
If I did it right, we're good.
You're good, yep.
Except to say your name so I can hear you.
Yep, Chuck Heeman, I am a member of the Tourism Advisory Committee and I run a small business in town. What we're presenting today is informative, it's the, the changes that the committee made from the original 2017 strategic plan, you'll see in the, the changes are in yellow. We updated this in 2022, so we wanted to get that in front of everybody. We feel, you know, as the committee, we want to get this going so that we can kind of get back on track, you know, from some of the things that have thrown us off track a little bit recently, and so we want to have that plan to, obviously for a number of reasons, we want to know what we're doing, what areas of emphasis we're going to be working on, and it helps set budgets. You know, you'll see again in the yellow, the changes that were made the last time we took this on, and really, I can sit here and talk about it for a long time, but that's really what we're looking at, just want to get it in front of everybody to consider.
So these that are in yellow, the changes in '22?
Correct, correct, yeah.
So, I'm, as you know, going to be more involved with your meetings and that type of thing, and I've met and discussed a few things with Brenda, but not a lot yet. I know we have a big meeting coming up on Thursday.
Correct.
And, which I plan to be at. So, the... So this is discuss and consider the strategic plan, are you, is the question whether or not we should do the strategic plan, or what is the question?
It's more informative and kind of showing the, kind of some of the directions that we want to go moving forward. I know there's been a lot of talk about, you know, sports versus leisure tourism, you'll see in this, there's plenty of room for both. And one of our goals is to obviously do the, do the best we can in all areas. We've received some feedback from the state of Nebraska to kind of look at things, and I'm reading off notes, ecotourism, agritourism, astrotourism. And, you know, we've kind of been asked to look at some of those things and how it might relate to our area too, so we want to diversify a little bit, where it's not all just one thing or another, we want to be able, obviously, to make as many, you know, things attractive in our community for tourism.
So, give me an eco example.
That is a great question, and I wish I had a good answer for you.
Okay.
I don't, sorry.
Okay. Well, that's a good question.
Yeah.
Eco, and then what else, you said astro.
Astro.
Yeah.
We'll build a space base and we'll go. Again, this is, this is what the state is saying, and I would go to them with ideas, I'm not going to sit here and pretend to be an expert on it.
Okay.
Yep.
So these are items being suggested by the state, and I'm sure not aware of what they are, but I'm sure we can figure it out.
Great, if they're not, then they're not, but it's certainly worth looking into to find different things.
I think Brenda's coming forward to try and...
I really wish she would, because she, she talks to the state a lot more than I do.
Okay, well, ecotourism, birding is huge in Nebraska, obviously with the crane migration, so ecotourism includes a lot of birding.
Okay.
Agritourism, that's, that's pretty obvious legacy, the plane's a perfect example of working farm. And then astrotourism, of course, is dark skies, stars.
Astronomical stuff, okay. All right, thanks.
Just a second, Brenda, could you come back for a second? Page five, have you got the same thing I have here?
Oh, I don't have anything, but I haven't looked it up. He's got it.
I think, who, did you write, did you do the, did you do this? Did you put these together?
Well, the board did, a long time ago, yeah.
Okay, well, anyway, you got a timeline, August of '22, does that need updated if we're going to utilize this thing?
No, we already did all of it.
So why are, why are, you said the yellow items were things that we were going to update?
The yellow things, they're complete, they were updated in 2021 and they're all complete.
I thought you said we were going to update.
I got a question here, it says the highlighted areas are items that we needed to continue to work on, and they have been completed or are ongoing, so it's, I understand your confusion.
I just had a little bit, I thought, well, it's kind of outdated, basically.
Those were the items that were added in '22 or addressed in '22 or something like that?
Can I have a minute?
Yes.
Maybe he has another copy, I don't know.
As an example, like on number one, when it said get the word out about the grant money, that's always ongoing.
Right, great.
Yeah, so that's an example of an ongoing, we'll, we continue to do that.
Okay.
These yellow items were added in 2022.
But in 2022, wouldn't they be ongoing as well if they're still in here and active? In your 2022 timelines?
They're done.
They're done.
The only thing that hasn't been completed in this plan are the things that are ongoing, and that's because we'll continue working on those, like the example I just gave you.
I think we need more clarification, because there's a whole bunch of stuff in yellow. And it says the yellow highlighted areas are items that we needed to continue to work on, and they have been completed or are ongoing. There's no way to just give an example, one or two, something that's been completed and something that's ongoing, we need to go through all of the items and determine if they're ongoing, have been completed, or needed to continue to work on, according to this, that was included in our package.
Well, we're done with this, this whole thing, other than just a couple of the ongoing things, that's it. So we have to have a completely new plan, we're done.
We've never seen it.
Yes, you approved it, yes, you approved it. In 2017, obviously you didn't, I don't think you were here, but you would have approved the changes again in 2021, because this is always the roadmap that we bring you so that we know how to budget money and the things that we're supposed to work on.
You're saying you've pretty much everything complete on here this time, so really wasn't any reason to see it again.
Well, we, just so you could see what was done.
Because you have ongoing items and you have completed items, that's why I'm confused, it's the ongoing items, on the same page as on the completed items.
Right, so like the sports marketing, that's ongoing, we're still working on that.
That could have done, had done on an ongoing page, and this could have been, what, file 13 probably?
Well, I know, but then it wouldn't have been under the category, and it would have been confusing.
I'm not sure I'm confused, yeah.
So that's it, there was just a couple of ongoing things. So that's it, there was just a couple of ongoing things.
So, I know we've heard a little bit about a strategic plan, and when is that scheduled for?
Well, we're, it, really, let me see, where are your notes? What, I mean, really, I think what they just, I wasn't in on this meeting, so I can't really speak to it, but he can clarify, I think what they want to, that's what they want to know, is what you want them to include in it.
Okay.
So, we're just.
In a strategic plan?
In a strategic plan, is that correct? I wasn't at the meeting.
Yeah, because we need to have a direction going forward. I didn't explain this as well as I could have. Yeah.
The, well, one of the, again, being kind of a newbie, trying to be more and more aware as to the Tourism Committee and their function, and our function, and some things like that. So, when this strategic plan was done in 2021, is that done with the Tourism Committee? At that time, I'm assuming maybe Charlie was there? Was there any commissioners there? And?
It was, it was at our annual retreat.
Okay.
Yeah, it was at our board retreat, December 15, 2022. So we have a lot of people there throughout the day, I can't exactly tell you who they were, but different entities came to visit and.
Sure.
Give input, and some different speakers, and it's just kind of a learning time for us.
I guess part of my question was back then, and then this coming time, does that include any commissioners and should it?
Yeah, we, commissioners have always been involved.
Okay.
From 2017 till now.
Okay, so your next, your next one is going to be based on, on your strategic plan meeting, like the one that you had before?
Yes.
And that information will then be discussed and put into a updated strategic plan, is that what I'm hearing?
Strategic plan, so if you look in here, all the things that are one through six are what we're, what we completed. So that's what we're trying to update, you know, I, I'm, my personal opinion, and I don't know what they discussed in their meeting, it's kind of Tourism 101, we've kind of expanded past that now. We've done a good job, like at National Tourism Week, to get the word out about tourism. Some of those things, we, we feel like we've completed really well, and just involving the industry, we're obviously doing that very well, so we just want to update those. And those are the six areas that we're focused on now, but that's what we're here for, is input as to if that's how you would like to continue.
Would you be using this as kind of a guideline for the, for the new and improved one, maybe?
Yes, if, if those areas are important. Six areas are the most important.
And how do we determine if they're important?
Well, like, the, I mean, obvious, obviously educating the board members, we had a lot of new members on the board at that time, so we're kind of past that, so we could easily replace that with something else.
You're talking about the Tourism Board members?
Yes, Tourism Board members, yes.
So.
I mean, obviously, we want to stick with the attracting tourists for history and culture, that's one of the most important things we do, right now, the entire board. And, you know, I think maybe we would like to, maybe not spend as much time on the education for hunting and fishing, is that correct? Maybe move that kind of more down into the sports category a little bit. There's a lot of, we talked about it in our sports meeting, a lot of opportunities for archery and shooting and that type of thing, and that could easily fall into there, so we could pick up another subtitle and start filling in some of those areas.
So again, this would be a guideline for the, the new strategic plan, is that, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
What I see here, you, you have on the agenda, it says discuss and consider Scottsbluff area vision, Visitors Bureau strategic plan, are you asking us to end that plan and sign off on that plan that is completed, or are you asking us to help you work on a new plan to start? So where are we at on that?
I think the plan was that we would work on it and, and, and a new plan.
Then you're going to need to bring it if you want us to consider it, you're asking us to consider that plan.
This is more informative, we're not asking you to vote it or.
Well, it's asking for it.
Yeah, just, just input.
Asking us to discuss and consider.
Yeah.
So, I guess I'm confused, is, this, this document that came in our packet, what is, what is this document a product of? Is this?
I'm assuming this was prepared back in 21, 22?
Not, not that document.
What was in your packet?
Oh, this one?
The document that was in the packet, it's got Chuck Heeman's name at the top, Subcommittee's last Chuck Heeman.
Right, these were the next areas, these are all the things that were completed and done there.
All right, so Mike, Mike.
So, the question picked out of this strategic plan, to highlight the things that were completed.
So you want us to vote it off or take it off there? That's what you're asking for here.
Ideas as to what you want it to include in the next one, according to this.
Well, I think, one thing we need to, I mean, this is, this is more of a work session topic, I think, I think a joint Tourism Committee meeting and with the commissioners is probably a better place to hash that stuff out. The, I do have some questions on this, on this document, I guess, first question that hasn't been answered yet is, what is this document a product of? You said there was a Subcommittee meeting?
It highlights a list. Things that were completed.
Someone said that this came from a Subcommittee meeting?
No, it came from, it came from the strategic plan. It's all the things that are highlighted in there, they were just pulled out of this document, so they were easier for you to review.
Who, who's, I guess, who submitted this to the packet?
I submitted it for them.
Okay. So I do have some questions about the topics on this, if we could just go through some of these items. One, it says our plan needs to include leisure group, eco, agro, agri, astro tourism. The, this, this is where Nebraska has identified our strengths and uniqueness. Does Nebraska study Scottsbluff County specifically, or do they study the state as a whole?
They study the state as a whole. Many of those areas, we have been product of travel writers and that, people coming out here to, to do all that research, marketing firms have been here to do that research, so we've been involved in the entire process.
Okay, so, like, astro tourism is really more specific to the Sandhills, when I go to the Nebraska tourism website, they, they specify the Sandhills as a location, de-location for astro tourism. I understand ecotourism fits here, I understand agritourism fits here. How do we, how do we measure the return on investment on that sort of?
Which story?
Like, agritourism and ecotourism?
Well, we have visitors' numbers, for starters.
So do we have those numbers?
Well, yeah, I mean, um.
So how many people came here last year to participate in ecotourism?
I don't know about ecotourism, I mean, obviously, we're more familiar with agritourism.
Okay, so do we have, remember, you told me last couple, last month, approximately 20,000 people visit the legacy of the plains every year?
And the visitors out at the Wildcat Hills, which I don't know those numbers, there's your ecotourism, tons of bird watchers go there, obviously, it's not as much as the Sandhills crane area, and we do have night stars people that come here, it might, might not be the primary location such as Merritt or the Sandhills, but we still have them. We've had travel writers here that have wrote about the skies in Scottsbluff County, so they're promoting us, we just have to be prepared for when they get here.
Would there be somewhere where those folks would register? In other words, if they're here to watch birds, is there somewhere that they register, or are they just, are they just driving through and watching, you know, so, I guess, what I'm getting at, wouldn't it be somewhat difficult to, to know why they are here if there isn't a place that they can say, I'm here to watch birds?
And, and that's our exact point, we need more events in these areas. A perfect example would be like the Prairie Chickens in McCook, she can tell you exactly how many people are there, and that's because they have specific events built around birding. We don't have anything in place.
Do they register people, or people register when they go there, if that's why they're there?
Oh, yeah, they register, there are lines, and the people go out.
Okay.
You know, in the morning and watch in lines, but we don't have any of those things in place, that's why we want them in the strategic plan, so we can move forward to do some of those things.
To keep track of them.
If I may just add something, as the owner operator of Peaceful Prairie Campsites, just on the south of the South Bluff.
Remember your name.
Lisa Betz Marquez, thank you. We have so many people contacting me directly, asking about stargazing, we have people bringing really fancy equipment to view the stars, and then we also, one year, well, it's been a couple of years now, we've had the burrowing owls appear on our prairie, and it seems that there is a great interest in viewing these types of animals, and also the stars. And, I mean, you can look at my reviews, people will talk about the stargazing, and it's something, I, I hadn't honestly thought about it, but now that you're talking about it, I think it would be worth a little investment. We do have great stargazing.
To get a count on these people, is that what you're saying?
To.
Because I think that was.
Invest in attracting people for the purpose of stargazing.
That's what Charlie's talking on here with you.
Yeah, I mean, I love that idea, I just, I'm sorry, I don't want to take over, I just wanted to share what I know.
Let me ask something here, because I'm, I'm not, this agenda item says discuss and consider, normally consider means some kind of action.
Action.
We're going to vote on something. I don't know what it is we're voting on exactly here, but I think it's, okay, so during my reading and research of tourism, I started to understand more about the money, where it comes from, how much that we get, and some things like that, and then I understood more that the, in the original part of the Tourism Committee, the commissioners appointed those people, and then the Tourism Committee acts as an advisory committee, right? And Brenda works for the commissioners, right, we're all clear on that, and that whatever the Tourism Board wants to advise us on, they can advise us on, but we're the ones that are the elected officials and take the votes, right? We're the ones that vote on whether or not we're going to spend money on certain things, and so I'm a little concerned about if we're going to have a strategic planning session, how that, I think it's important for us to know what the Tourism Board is thinking, I think it's important for the Tourism Board to know what this group is thinking, because you can bring all kinds of things to this group, and if they don't agree with you, they're going to vote no, and you shouldn't be offended by that, because we should try and know each other intentions, each other's thoughts, and where the Tourism Committee is coming from, and where we might be coming from. And so, we have to work together with that, but ultimately, the commissioners need to somehow give the Tourism Committee some thoughts of what we believe in, okay? And it, to me, it seems like somewhere along the way, and it may be because maybe we haven't been as active in the thought process that we should have been, I certainly haven't been, I'll, I'll say that right up front. But ultimately, the decisions, the way I see it, where the money goes and that kind of thing, ends up in front of us, right? It ends up here, recommended by the Tourism Board. And I just want to be sure that if we're doing a strategic plan, that we, the Tourism Board needs to know what, what we're thinking, and we need to know what you're thinking along the way.
You're mistaken, that's what we're here.
Yeah, I would love to have.
I think, are we, is the consideration to approve that we're going to do a strategic plan, would that be the consideration, or what would, I mean, obviously, or I don't think anyway, that we came here tonight with the intention of all of you give us your ideas and all of us give you our ideas, we didn't come prepared for that tonight. Right, and that, to me, would be part of the strategic planning process, and that those ideas get laid out on the table with, with each other, so to speak.
Love, love for that to happen.
Right.
I know it would help us as a committee.
So, when we talk about this item on the agenda, I'm trying to think of what you're asking of us.
I think maybe the next step would be to schedule a work session where we look at this and see what, again, getting the input.
I know that we were headed towards a work session together back a month ago, or a little longer, and then that got sidetracked and, but I, I believe that at some point in time, in my opinion, and reading through things that I've been reading through in the last week or 10 days, that, I don't want to say that we all need to get on the same page, but that's part of what a strategic plan does, right? That person that's facilitating the strategic plan starts to get input from 30 people, and then that person starts to narrow it down to what does this group think as a group, and where can we head? And that's part of the strategic planning process.
Just a point to clarify, I don't think you're asking us to approve this, that's already been approved.
That was previous, right.
And I think, I think that's where the confusion is, is that we have a strategic plan, it's on the agenda to approve a strategic plan, it wouldn't be this one, so.
Is there a chance you could put together what you guys had done previously in strategic planning? Put that together, so we have a basis to start with, so we're, we have a basis.
That's what that is.
That is what it is.
That's.
That's what we have.
There's probably a lot more than that.
That's our baseline.
Don't you have the balloon races and all that on there, I didn't see them.
No.
Isn't that part of your tourism?
That, that's not part of our strategic plan, an event, that's, it's a big event probably falls within something, you know, to a, well, no, it's not that one. Number two, to promote and support special events, so that's where that would fall.
This is the broad picture.
That's pretty general.
Yeah.
This is, this is the broad picture, then there's a lot of specifics underneath that.
I think you guys need to itemize the specifics of what you're wanting to do, all those little things could be, I mean, surely you have the time to write those up, where they could all be looked at and identified.
Well, what they want to do is going to be in the new strategic plan.
Right, that's what I'm saying, so when you look at that.
This is what they've done previous.
I think that's where you want to start, of what you've done, and then add the items that you don't have included in there, and then that gives us some basis, and we can either add or throw them out.
Because then we get in these lists of astro tourism, and then you have this long list where everybody's got an interest in, and we have to prioritize what we can actually accomplish.
The confusion, I think, Russ, is the fact the way it was put on the agenda.
It is very confusing.
That we're going to approve something, and basically, basically, correct me if I'm wrong.
You're right.
But basically, what you're asking is for continuation of an updated new strategic plan, correct?
Building what we have now.
Okay, okay, so there really is anything, we, we can approve to continue with what we're doing, and, and use this as our, as our basis to start a new strategic plan, with a group meeting between us, between. us, between you guys, between any other, any other folks that would want to attend that meeting and give their input. And then develop another strategic updated plan. Would that be correct?
So you wouldn't want to call it out at this time? It's better to have an updated one and then.
Well, and I think that's where the confusion is.
Yeah. I think the warning in the agenda is a little confusing, which is considered, I sincerely love, yeah. But I think, I completely agree, the next step is let's get everybody involved and figure out what our collective priorities are.
There's a facilitator and then that's when we would come together.
And I think we're okay on this because it says, discuss and consider Scotts Brook Prairie Visitor Bureau Strategic Plan. Okay? So which is saying that we're going to decide that we're going to meet with these folks, we're going to meet with area residents and we'll put together a strategic plan.
Would we vote to have a meeting? Would we have to vote?
The facilitator will put it together for us.
I think this is, sounds like this is for today is purely informative. Correct? That's what I think. So we don't need to vote on anything today.
But we have discussed and I think it's important to note again, that, that strategic plan, you, the tourism committee has done a strategic plan every five years or so. Would that be true, Brenda?
Well, was, that one was first, it was complete in 2017. The information was complete in 2017 and presented to us in 2018.
Okay.
But the information was from then. And then, yes, it was updated in 2021.
Twenty-one, presented in 22 apparently. So about every five years or so.
Yeah.
And did it happen, when did the lodging tax start?
For, oh, heavens.
Nineties?
Ninety-three maybe, ninety-two, ninety-three.
I've tried to pull it up on the Department of Revenue stuff, but I wasn't finding it easily.
Didn't have websites.
I can help you get the link.
It wasn't helpful.
I think our records go back as far as 2009 maybe.
Okay. So, so there has been some strategic planning and I'm, I do believe that strategic planning in and of itself could be helpful and for all of us again to understand our roles in this and to try and all of us get to have some input on priorities. And because I, if I'm not mistaken, a lot of the issues that we've maybe had over the last, frankly, I'll say we could go back as much as the last year, two, three, four years possibly, that, that we haven't done a great job of knowing what each entity, entity being tourism committee versus commissioners versus Brenda. And Brenda's kind of in a hard spot. She's, she's in a hard spot in that she has five different commissioners that she has to try and satisfy the best she can. Plus she has tourism people, plus all the people giving input to the tourism people and asking for money and all those things. And she's a popular person to the extent that she has money to give away.
Right.
But she's an unpopular person when your particular project doesn't get chosen. And so she catches it sometimes on the good side and sometimes on the bad side things. So, but I certainly would say that if the strategic planning person, and I've seen the lady's name and I think I've worked with her at least once or twice before in other organizations, but if she can help accomplish some of what I described, then I think that it can be successful. And obviously, as you know, part of the sports stuff will be part of it when we make, when we have the discussion. And it's, and then whatever other people have as input can be done. And I think that's good. I think that's, that's really, so I think what you're asking for here is simply, I don't even think it needs a vote, but a simply a blessing that we're okay with a strategic plan, trying to accomplish at least the things that I've mentioned and then what these guys have mentioned as well.
I was just going to tell you that in 2017, when we wrote this, we only had five areas and really sports wasn't a big part of it. So that's, that's a large portion of what we've done in the past four years is update all the sports and activities, so.
Into them.
It definitely, yeah. And so it definitely needs to be in there. So it's in there, but it wasn't until a little bit later until we were introduced to Sports Nebraska.
Okay. So any other comments on that? I guess.
Yeah, I've got a couple of comments. You know, traditionally tourism has been a, the commissioners have been hands off when it comes to tourism and how we spend that money. The tourism, the lodging tax is really the county's only opportunity or to stimulate, to stimulate the local economy. We don't have the ability to do TIF projects. We don't have the ability to do LB-57 stuff, LB-840 stuff. This, this money really needs to be looked at through the lens of return on investment. And, you know, imagine if somebody wanted to put a tax on baseball tickets with the promise that we'll use that money to help you sell more baseball tickets. It's essentially what we've done to the hotels. We've put a tax on the hotels, told them that we would use that money to help them sell more hotel rooms. And unfortunately, that hasn't been the primary focus of how we spend tourism money. The, you know, it's nearly $500,000 a year that gets spent, really more as a PR function of the county. We really need to be asking hotel owners how we can help them. I think the first thing that we need to learn from the hotel industry is when are you full? When are you empty? How can we help you fill your hotel rooms? Those are the first three questions we should ask when we develop this strategic plan. Mark, if I, if I wanted to tax you and say I'll help you sell more windows, you would expect that money to go back to selling more windows? And the same goes for this tourism money. The beautiful thing about this, that the more hotel rooms that sell, more lodging tax it generates. And therefore, there's more, there's more money in the kitty to do things that, that are maybe not directly related to filling hotel rooms. You know, but there's, there's a lot of projects that the tourism dollars have gone to support that are more like community, community betterment. It would maybe fit more under the guise of keynote spending, you know, for community betterment. But lodging tax needs to go, needs to be invested in a way that's going to produce more lodging tax. Or certainly projects that are wonderful for the cities and that are wonderful for, you know, cultural and community enhancement. Primary focus must be to support the hotel industry. There's a lot of opportunity here. You know, the more people that stay the night in the hotels means more people are going to walk through the doors of a museum. More people that stay the night in hotels means the more people are going to go to baseball games. More people who stay the night in the hotels means more people are going to visit bands on Broadway. Those are the sorts of things that are going to thrive when we put more people in hotel rooms.
I, we don't even come close to spending $500,000 a year. You guys have never even approved that much. At the end of 2024, the overall clearance I had to spend was 439,289.40, 46 cents, and we only spent $307,000.
So there was, so tell us what the tax revenue again was in 2024?
I just have the totals. I just know that we didn't spend $500,000 because we weren't.
I understand that, but.
But the revenue is somewhere between four and five.
Yeah.
Is that right?
The revenue was what, 339? 439?
439 is what you approved, 440, and what we spent was 307.
And we typically approve a little bit less than what we generate, correct?
How much we generated?
We.
It's an estimate and that, that's.
It's an estimate, right? It's an estimate.
It's, yeah, we, I, I come, because I have no idea what we're going to make this next year. So when I presented, it's, it's an estimate of what I think it's going to be.
It's always an estimate and almost every budget we prepare is an estimate on revenue.
Right.
So.
So we have a surplus because I've estimated accurately, but we don't spend $500,000.
But the budget is nearly $500,000 a year. If we're estimating $439,000 of revenue and that that is a conservative estimate, which is what we always do, we always do a conservative estimate. That means somewhere between $439 and $500,000 is what we're going to generate in lodging tax. That, that might, and we can split hairs over $60,000 or we can agree that the return on investment must be to put more people in hotel rooms. That is the point that I was trying to make. So that's where we need to head. So the first three questions that we need to ask, what nights are you full? What nights are you empty? And how can we help you fill your hotel rooms?
I think, in my opinion, simply put, I agree with what you're saying. I agree with what's been said kind of on both sides. But all of that needs to be part of the strategic plan. That, that isn't going to get ironed out here tonight.
Yeah.
And, but I can, yeah, see that strategic planning process, process being fairly extensive and those kind of questions certainly need to be brought to that or even answered prior to have answers to those kind of questions before we even come to the strategic planning session. So that we're prepared, so everybody will hear the question and answer all at the same time and it might help them as they think about what their priorities are. And every single individual is going to be different. We're all going to have different opinions as to what's important and what's not, so.
So I know this was just informational, this piece of paper that came, but there's, there's, there's some information, a piece of paper that was submitted in the packet that really piqued some questions. One of them, one of the head scratchers that, not head scratcher, but intrigued me was research, conversion study and benefits. What, what does that mean? Research, conversion, study and benefits?
The last one I believe we had done was 2012. And it's just to see how the tourism dollars, you know, spread out through the community. And we totally intended on doing that until it was $16,000. So obviously, it's, it's a Runyon study is the one that was recently done. So what we did is basically used some that the other communities, surrounding communities has done to see what the trends were there, just because it was so important. When it's our turn, we'll do it, but Sydney has a recent one, Dawes County has a recent one. So to get our trending studies, we used, we used information from those counties.
So I read, again, over the last three or four days, some information that came out of one of the University of Nebraska-Lincoln NEB Guides, that most of you have all seen those, particularly the Ag people, but, but it talked about if, if we see X amount of visitors here, it equates to X number of dollars here. And so when we, I don't know whether this has any, any thing to do with that, but conversion study to say, to me, might mean some of that, that says if, if we see certain number of visitors in this area, it computes to certain number of dollars spent, certain number of nights in motels and that type of thing. And there was some information like that in that NEB guide that I was, I was reading. And maybe that's part of this process.
We do that every year for Old West Balloon Fest. That was one of my main parts too, preparing for that, for nationals for the last 10 years, was putting that whole study together. So we have a really strong economic impact statement for Old West Balloon Fest using that exact information. But I was going to point out, if you look at number four, where the conversion study is, you can see that we knew we couldn't do the conversion study, so we added other things that we could put in there to get information. So in other words, because we couldn't do the conversion study, we were able to hire the Rural Fellows. And what they did was the study about hard copies. And they spent the summer out at the Scotts Brook National Monument. They spent hours out at the Legacy of the Plains Museum and then also out at the fair, but that was to gather information from people so that we did have our own hard numbers that we didn't have to pay someone $16,000 to do. I mean, it cost about that anyway because you're paying for their lodging and in their experiences, but it was more hands-on. So because we couldn't fulfill that, we still were able to do the survey, different ages and the Rural Fellows had hard numbers for us and then also to continue our marketing to the leisure traveler. So those are the things that we completed because we couldn't do the study.
So final, final comment here, you know, we got this document in the packet again and it tells us, you know, the things that are ongoing or continuing to, continue to happen or have been completed, you know, and like you mentioned, the Rural Fellows helped identify our target market. But you don't tell us what that target market is. You just explained it here, but when the, when, when we're going to make a decision on what we would like to see in the strategic plan, that's, that's information that we would need, not just that you identified the target market, but what is the target market? And that wasn't provided here. And, you know, there's, when, when you put interns at the top of the monument and at the Legacy of the Plains, of course, they're going to tell you they're here for leisure. That'd be like me sending interns to the Rockies game and asking people why they came to Denver that day. We need, we need a more in-depth study of what our market should be, if I, you know, that's really just confirmation bias more than anything. There's, you know, we need to involve the hotels. The hotels are full the majority of the time for business travel. And it is, it is, it is, leisure is probably third or fourth on their list. But we, we need to, we need to make sure that we're talking to the hotels, not just visiting leisure sites to find out why people are here. So I think that will help us, you know, fill this out. I think it'll help us gain, gain insight into not just what you've done, but what you've learned by doing what you've done. All I have to say for tonight.
Okay. And I, and I'll just follow up if I may. So none of this, the strategic plan has the results. We've brought those to you separately. So when our interns departed and in order. So when our interns departed, and in order for them to finish the program, they had to come here and do a presentation for you, so that I could sign off on their work. And they did present the information to you that they discovered. And they also then presented to you what they felt was our strongest target market. So we, we did that. It's just not represented here because I don't show the, I don't show the end information. That was all reported at different times. But we did do that. That was part of their exit strategy, so.
One of the things, you know, regarding messaging, is messaging needs to be recurring, and it needs to be consistent. And simply putting that information on the sheet here certainly be helpful. I don't know that everyone here remembers the Rural Fellows standing in front of us telling us what those numbers are.
Well, and I, I, you know, up until just recently, I've had a whole new revelation as to how, how I need to focus in on some of these tourism items that, you know, we get fed a lot of information on a, a lot of different subjects. And, but I want to try and make a serious effort to try and be more informed on tourism in the future. And I'll try and be more aware of what's happening.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. So I, I guess I would ask the commissioners, I think we've already decided that we don't think we need to take action on this item. But are we in general consensus that the strategic plan would be a good idea to help get the parties together to, again, the, the strategic plan would be to try and have a common goal and focus as to where we're headed, which could and should include several things, including the, some of the new stuff, the state might include some of those, the leisure travel, the sports travel, could include several things. But that would be figured out at that strategic plan.
Okay, let's say, instead of having a strategic plan to start with, how about a pre-planned where somebody would put things on a piece of paper, that would be a list of things, and you would pick them randomly, what, what your thoughts, what you'd like to see for Scottsbluff County. And then everybody could do that, and then you could compile all those papers, take an average of things, and, and see where we're at, and then have the strategic plan once you have an objective.
Well, I think, I think we're going to have to bring some of those things that we're interested in. I have asked Brenda, for my own personal information, to help list events that we've been doing and have a spreadsheet with that information. And so she's preparing that for me, and we need to get that to all the commissioners, Brenda, because it will help them in their thought process for a strategic planning session.
And that, and that's what it is, really, Russ, as you get. I tended, well, I don't remember where, it was at Legacy of the Plains years ago, I can't remember. But there was a lot of, a lot of input, and a lot of suggestions, and a lot of things that.
You write those all down and then.
And there was, there was somebody that was writing, and that's, that's the beginning of, of putting together your strategic plan, is to have a, a large group, and that's, it could turn into that. And everybody put their input down, and then with that, you develop a, a strategic plan.
Generally, if you remember, you know, we did that in Morel at one time. We had a strategic plan where Morel needed to be ten years from now. So they brought a facilitator in, which a professor from Shatter State College came in and spent a couple evenings with us. And we sit down with that, and you know, he was a promoter, and he was a goer, you know, and he
Well, Cap.
Put a lot of things in front of us, and then we moved over into little groups and pods, and we, we took art. And then we brought all of our ideas to one big table, and everybody talked.
Cap just completed one of those a few months ago.
Right, and Brenda is talking about hiring this firm, what's her name again?
Jamie Wengart.
Okay, yeah, Jamie Wengart. And she's done several for some of the larger organizations around the Panhandle.
She's what it did in Caplin.
Yeah, and, anyway, but that's, her job is to gather those thoughts, and then get them put on the table, so to speak.
Down into a package.
And then all of a sudden, we're taking a great big bunch of things, and we're narrowing it down to a focus. And that's what we need to happen.
That's what needs to happen.
Right.
And that, that facilitator is going to involve TCD as well as gearing tourism. You know, the goal is to make sure we're not being redundant or duplicating services.
Wouldn't we bring some of the hotel people in, along with the players from various cities around the area?
I know that this page, Chuck, from you, mentions TCD and gearing and some others that would be bringing information as well. Okay? All right, okay, so I'm asking again, do we have consensus that doing a strategic plan and encouraging the tourism board to do the strategic plan with all these thoughts in mind and your thoughts in mind, are we in agreement with that?
Yes.
I'm okay with that, too. So it looks like you have a consensus from this group that we should plan that so that we can all try and be more on the same page, the best we can, okay? All right.
Try to do that on steak night.
All right, so the next item of business is to discuss and consider approval of a shared service agreement between Scottsbluff County and Twin Cities Development, TCD, to purchase access to Placera AI's location analytics platform and reports for one-year period to better understand visitor behavior and foot traffic trends in Scottsbluff County for the purpose of boosting tourism by analyzing visitor data. This item tabled from the March thirty-first meeting. Charlie?
Yeah, so there was a member of the public who requested a more specific agenda item. So we tabled it, we got very specific language for the agenda here. And this will be a shared service agreement between Scottsbluff County and Twin Cities Development. We're sharing the cost of it.
Between tourism and.
Tourism funds and TCD.
Is anyone from here from TCD tonight?
No, I did, I was on the phone with Jordan this afternoon, and he was, you know, supportive. Wanted to see this go through. It was very, it would be very valuable for TCD, as it will be for us. The other reason we tabled it last week was, there was a suggestion from a few people, including those with knowledge of a similar product available through our GIS office.
Oh, yeah.
And we did have a demo from that group, Business Analytics, Business Analytics by Esri. And they were, they were very forthcoming that they cannot do what Placer AI can do. In fact, Placer AI is a partner with Esri, and they build their platform on top of the Esri platform. And so that, you know, they said, we cannot do foot traffic. That is not our, we don't, we just don't have the ability to do that. We can study maps, but we can't study cell phone movement patterns and that kind of stuff. It seemed like they were encouraging of the Placer AI products based on the data that we want to gather.
It was mentioned that there were other, besides the one through the assessor's office. Did we look into any of those?
That's what you just said, Nate.
No, I mean, there was, we looked into one other one, the one through the assessor's.
Yeah, so the other one we looked at was called Zartico. And they presented to the Tourism Committee, and the Tourism Committee came forward with a Placer AI recommendation.
Now, has TCD already voted on it with their board?
Yes.
So they're, they passed it?
Yes.
So they're just waiting on our.
We went to them with a request for a three-year agreement, and they wanted to do a one-year agreement. So that's, that's where we're at.
And the Tourism Board is okay? Have you guys discussed it? Are you all right with it?
Not.
Pardon me, change it from a three to a one-year agreement? Well, that's only going to be a one-year agreement. But I was just wondering if you guys have discussed the possibilities of the usage of it, or the benefits of it?
Tourism sent this recommendation to us for a three-year agreement.
Right.
We're only going to do a one. That's all right.
Let me mention a couple things.
Okay.
Jason and I talked about that this afternoon.
Okay.
Lana, and I don't believe Lana's here tonight. But she, I believe, had sent an email to possibly Kelly. I didn't see it, Jason did. But some of the question was whether or not it needed to go back to the Tourism Committee once the, that it was changing from a three-year contract to a one-year. And Jason, do you want to explain that? You can explain it better than I can, what your thoughts were. And I think the point was, I think that the concept was approved as a recommendation out of the Tourism Committee. But basically, it went from a three-year to a one-year, a more conservative amount. We weren't increasing the amount. So Jason, why don't you explain what your thoughts were there?
Sure. My memory of this was that it went to the Tourism Committee regarding an agreement between the county and Placer AI. And the recommendation came back to this board for a three-year term of the contract. And we had a regular meeting, an open session on that issue. And while the agreement from the Tourism Committee was for a three-year term, ultimately, I think the board on that evening discussed two things. One is information that TCD was willing to pay for half of the contract price, and whether or not the county wanted to go with a three-year term. Input at the meeting was to take a more conservative approach and see how it went on a trial one-year contract period. So while the recommendation was for three, the board ultimately voted on and approved one. And so that was completed. And then thereafter, a separate agenda item has been noticed up a couple of times after the board approved the one-year contract. It's a March seventeenth, and then again on the March thirty-first was for the, just for the agreement between the county and TCD for TCD to pay for fifty percent of the, of the contract price. So what's on the, since the board already approved, took the recommendation for three years and decided on one, that was completed. And then this subsequent agenda item is just to have a shared services agreement between the county and TCD to confirm the number of things. One is that the agreement that's approved between the county and Placer puts certain responsibilities on the county. But it says that the county can designate TCD as essentially a specified entity that can have access to the data. But they wanted there to be a contract between the county and TCD to confirm that that TCD would keep information confidential as required by Placer. And that since the county's contract says the county's going to pay that thirty thousand dollars, we wanted to have a contract with TCD to confirm that their board had approved payment of fifteen thousand. So tonight, it would just be approval of the shared services agreement between the county and TCD.
The one-year contract's already been approved.
Right. So my thought is, I think what Mark is indicating is, is that whether or not this would have to go back to the committee, my opinion would be it would not need to, because the committee did make a recommendation for a longer term. But at a public meeting, this board decided to have a lesser term.
So we're not voting on terms, we're just voting on the balance of the contract.
And it wouldn't even be the balance, it really would just be the contract between the county and TCD to confirm that TCD will comply with the underlying contract that the county has with Placer AI, and that TCD would in fact pay for fifty percent of that one-year contract term.
What's, that has to be for either Chuck or Brenda. Was TCD part of the original three-year contract to be shared?
Yes.
If they were going to share, it would be.
Was TCD part of the original three-year contract that the, that the Tourism Board approved?
The agreement was that, that there would be the, I, I, the three-year agreement doesn't mention TCD, but we were supposed to get the written agreement with TCD, and that was the condition of approving the three-year.
So that's why this has to be done, because they weren't in agreement on the first part, weren't involved in the agreement on the first part.
Now that it's changed to a one-year now.
He's just picking up the legal stuff.
This is the, the first agreement that we've had written and agreed to with both entities, as far as I know.
Well, the way that Placer AI had it is the contract, whether it was one or three, is just between Placer and the county.
Right.
And then when the, when TCD indicated during that process that they would pay fifty percent, I recommended and Placer recommended that there be a separate agreement with TCD just to ensure that TCD would abide by the confidentiality provisions and that type of thing. And then for the county's perspective, we just wanted to have an agreement to make sure that their board had approved.
Did that ever, did that ever, did that ever go back to the Tourism Board for approval?
What, what went to the Tourism Board was whether or not the county should enter into the agreement with Placer. And they came and presented the recommendation to do it for three, and the board accepted that, but wanted to do a lesser term.
When you say the board, TCD?
No, no, meaning this board.
This board.
TCD only has indicated, I think, all along that they would pay fifty percent.
Whether it was a one or a three-year?
Whether it was a one or a three.
Okay.
Basically, we wouldn't even be discussing this if he hadn't wanted to add on these other basic addendums that you wanted to make sure that.
Yes, Placer requested, so once you, in the underlying contract, once you designate somebody as a specified entity or a partner that has access to the data, that we have an agreement with them. And then my recommendation was we would have something in writing for the county to show that TCD would in fact want to pay that fifty percent.
I, I, I don't have a problem with the agreement, and I think the product is probably going to do exactly what it says. The only concern I have is the exclusion of the, of the Tourism Board with the changes and whatever else, whatever else is there.
So that would be up to.
They'd, they'd agree on one thing, and now we, we've decided we're going to do something else again by excluding the, the Tourism Group. Not that they would deny it, but I think if nothing more, it's a courtesy, because they're, they're the ones that approved the first one.
So historically, and this would be up to the, to you five as the commissioners, is that when you get a recommendation from any of the committees, and they recommend a greater number, and you narrow it down to a lesser amount, it wouldn't then require going back to the committee historically. Meaning if the county wanted to do, if you as commissioners wanted to do more than three, more than they recommended, historically, I think it's gone back to committees. But if you want to do less than they recommend, it wouldn't typically require going back to the committee again.
Is there any difference in the money? Is it thirty thousand for three or one, or?
It's, it would be less. The, the three-year contract, I think, had a fee schedule for, for each year.
So there's the, the, when we.
So there's the, the, when we had a three-year contract, it was gonna be $25,000 for the first year, $27,500 for the second year, $30,000 for the third year. The one-year contract then is for $30,000. So, you know, for a difference of $2,500, I don't know that it's necessary, I don't believe it's necessary for it to go back to the Tourism Committee. Now, if we want to talk about, I mean, we can certainly do that. I, I'm, I'm not in favor of it. This is a decision that the Tourism Committee made. They approved a three-year contract well in excess of $30,000. And the, the, the real purpose of doing this is to track and, and, is to track return on investment of the tourism spend. So if there's someone who's not in favor of tracking tourism data, I think that, that is where the opposition comes in. Why would anyone be not in favor of tracking return on investments? That's, that's, that's where we're getting to here.
I would only say, and we've, we made that decision long ago.
Yes.
We've made it two or three different times. But anyway, we have someone else that would like to speak, so go ahead.
Hi, my name is Debbie Wagner. It was more of just a question, I was wondering, is this?
What, hang on, what was your name again?
Debbie Wagner.
Debbie Wagner.
W A G N E R. My question was just, is this topic done and over with, or is it still open for discussion? Given that in the last couple of meetings, there was some concern that, that citizens had not been fully aware that this, of what the topic was in general. For instance, myself, I did not know until I came to the last meetings. And then I went back and started looking at stuff, and there were just questions that I had, not for or against, just questions. So I don't want to ask the questions if it's already been voted on and there's no point. But that would be my question, is just, is it still open for discussion or not?
Well, just my own perspective, and these guys can chime in, but certainly, it was brought, I think originally, it was possibly brought to the Tourism Committee, but we may have heard about it early on. Charlie, I think, gave us a brief description about it, maybe in Board and Staff Reports way back a couple, three months ago. And then it ended up going to Tourism, and they heard what it was about and gave a recommendation that yes, they wanted to do it. It came to us, I thought, that at that time, it's changed from three to one, and we gave our blessing to that. And so from a technical standpoint, we've heard all the information of what it does and why and all those kinds of things. And we have made a decision, some of the technicalities of the term changed, and then there was some help in paying for it, which to me, sweetened the pot a little bit.
We did approve it.
So we've already voted on once?
It's all approved.
We've already approved it, so what are we gonna vote on tonight?
So the, the agreement with TCD.
Okay, so we're adding that to it, okay.
So now it's just the agreement between the county and TCD.
Gotcha.
They came back and wanted us to add this wording in, basically.
If you have something to say about it, you're welcome to say it at this point, but it's pretty much been discussed.
I guess I just, there were questions of like, who has the access to this information and what, who is actually going to be using this data, is first of all, like, who in the departments is, you know? That is, I understand the necessity for it, I understand all of the great things that it's gonna do, and, you know, I'm, I'm for it. I'm just curious as to who's gonna have access and what they're gonna do with it, because all of the data in the world doesn't mean anything if there's not somebody actually gathering and using it for something. My second point would be, I understand budgetary reasons or whatever, maybe doing a short-term contract because you don't know what it's going to be like. But working, in my job, I work with data all the time, and you're not gonna get the right data in just one year. You're gonna need to see what has been working, what are we gonna change, and then where have we gone since those changes have been made? And is that the right direction? And that's the only way to make data-informed decisions, is to have a little bit of time year after year. You're not gonna know in one year if the, something that you did worked because you only have the data for that one year, as opposed to a little bit further. Now granted, I don't know what they have, and if you could look back further, so that, you know, that would maybe take that off the board. I had concern about the one-year because I saw on the website that it said if you just got the one-year contract afterward, you had fees up to 8% increase. And so that made me question like, well, is it viscerally responsible for us, for, for the city to be, or the county to be paying for just one year when, you know, I didn't have access to the numbers? So again, just questions that I had. The thing I noticed is it said that that data had to be used for certain things, and only the people that had access to that data could use that data. So I was curious, one of the last meetings, you said we could work with other entities and get information for other things, but that's not what it seemed like on the website to me. So I didn't know what that meant exactly to you about working with, having this information and then using it to work with other companies and, and, you know, things that, that are trying to hap- happen in the community.
So the contract certainly allows us to share the data with our stakeholders. And that's one of the changes that happened in the, in the agreement with Twin Cities Development, is they were, originally, they were on the contract as a trusted data agency or trusted data, TDA, Trusted Data Addendum or something like that. And so then they could only view the data. Because we changed that to a shared service agreement. Now they are allowed to share the data that they glean from the, from the software. They are allowed to share that data with members of their organization.
Didn't you say you can also, you can also back up, like something happened two or three weeks ago, like you wanted to get ahold of, you know?
We can go back seven years.
So they can go back a long time to find out what data you wanted.
We could study bands on Broadway from, since that time until now. We could study the baseball tournament from, you know, back to, you know, seven years ago. We can even go out and study events that are happening and, you know, there's a bands on Broadway program similar, you know, in other towns, we can, we can see how we're faring against them and see what sort of, you know, if we wanted to study. We've had this concert we had out here last summer, you know, we could, we can go back and study last year's concert. There's a, if that group is touring, we can go see how they're doing at their other tour stops.
See, and I think that's why we bought the one-year thing, because we could back up seven. So it makes more sense to be able to back up seven, look at pre.
Absolutely.
You know, instead of buying three ahead, two more ahead, we can go back up five.
Yeah, that was my main question.
And then regarding your question on who's gonna be able to access this, the county's gonna have four logins and TCD will have one login. It is my hope that the Tourism Committee will hire two data interns for the summertime. I've emailed Lisa and Brenda about this. We could get a data analyst from the University of Wyoming or Colorado or Lincoln, you know, to really come in and, and really, you know, pick this thing apart. The data that we can get from it is really only limited by our imagination. The, the number of filters and the number of, you know, the way we can manipulate the data or, or set parameters to, to gather the data is, is really impressive. And I know this is just a topic that a lot of you are just now learning about because I didn't think tourism's a hot topic lately. But we've gone through a vetting process, you know, this is something that got started really four months ago, three months ago. There've been multiple presentations, in-public meetings, enclosed meetings, another entity that doesn't have to hold open meetings. There's been a lot of eyeballs on this for a while, and this is, the people who understand data, the people who understand, who see the value in this data, want to see this implemented at Scotts Bluff County and at TCD. And the, and for us to be able to study and see the return on investment, gonna be, is gonna, is invaluable. And it's, it's how we need to make decisions going forward.
And then one other thing that I noticed is, is specifically in some of the documents, it said it's limited to, access is limited to Nebraska. So I was just curious as to what that meant as far as, is that the data, is, you can only access data from Nebraska?
Also, we've asked specifically, you know, can we study an event in Casper? Can we study an event?
So do you know what that is referring to then?
I don't know what you're referring to.
It was in, I'd have to look. I was just curious, especially because we're on the border.
Right.
So that didn't make much sense to me if it was limited to just Nebraska numbers.
And these are, yeah, these are discussions that we've had with Placer, you know, when we studied some of the events here in town, it was showing us traffic patterns that came from Wyoming, from Colorado, from San Francisco.
I mean, I went on there and, and just looked, because you can get a free account as well. I don't know if you, but you can also get a free account. It doesn't have quite as many fancy features, of course. But I was just looking at it just to see what it did and, and, but you keep mentioning foot traffic, so I was trying to just wrap my brain about what it was that you were saying. I think what it does is slightly different than my understanding from how you talk about it. So that's why I was doing a little bit more digging into it. And then, again, I was just curious because as I was doing research, I found like five or six other companies, none of them have costs on there. So it's not like I was sitting there saying this one is better, you know, you, I'm trusting that that process has already been done. But again, just because this was something that brought up, I just had questions and was curious as to if this was still being discussed or if it was a done deal type of.
I think more, I think the more people learn about it, the more value they're gonna see in, in the product. As we share data, you know, one of our goals is to be able to go to entities like the City of Garing and the City of Scotts Bluff and say, hey, look what tourism means to your town. You know, right now, the City of Scotts Bluff doesn't put any of their, any of their occupancy tax into a tourism-specific fund. 100% of their occupancy tax goes into the general fund. And if we can say, hey, look, this is, you know, tourism is valuable here, maybe you should be investing more in your tourism-related facilities. Now, the City of Garing, they put 50% of their occupancy tax into tourism, but the other 50% goes into their general fund. And shoot, they might say, they might say, hey, the county's doing everything they need to do for tourism, we can put 100% of our occupancy tax into the, into the general fund. And, you know, that would buy down property taxes. The, the opportunities here for cost-effective, you know, database decision-making is, is, it really can't be spoken enough. The opportunity's really endless.
I'm, I'm, I, I think it's going to surprise you guys where a lot of this money is coming from as well, as far as tourism. And I think maybe it'll help open mindsets as to some of the, where that money should be invested and with actual evidence. So, thank you.
Appreciate your input. Dave?
My name's Dave Wolf, I'm the Executive Director of Legacy of the Plains Museum. I'm curious, I thought you said last meeting there was four total licenses? And TCD get one and the county would get three, you said four this time?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, you just misspelled.
Three, three here, one there.
Okay. You said that there would be two, open two interns, and I'm assuming, would you get the third license? Or would Brenda get a license on that?
Brenda was, I mean, yeah, I think that makes sense that she would have that.
Okay. So I would just like to remind everybody that what was discussed at the last meeting, that Apple products are what they use. What was it, Spectre? What was the other one? Vic, the other tourist?
Zartico.
Zartico, thank you, sorry. I'm getting old, my mind's slipping. Zartico was, I think, a more specific tourism tracker program. And what Charlie offered, suggested was if we're trying to get other entities involved to help pay for it, that a more economic development-centered program might be easier for them, more palpable for them to be able to cost share. So one of the things, and I know I mentioned this a couple of times, but I think it's, it's fair to remind you that I have a couple of questions based upon that. I asked them to do the monument. I do the monument for a year, and I think it was 56, 52,000 people that they had go through the monument that year. And of course, with Apple, you extrapolate out. Well, I went up and, and I actually talked to one of the rangers up there, and they said they have, the government has a whole tracking data analyst for all their national parks. So they come in and they actually do analysis, okay? We're looking at numbers for the trails, we're looking at numbers going up to the top, we're looking at visitor's numbers. And so they, they've got a little bit more money than we do to back stuff like that, right? So even if you extrapolate out 50% market share, they're still at 70,000 to 80,000 person discrepancy. That's a 40% miss. So based upon that, I have a couple of questions. Whoops, hit the wrong button. That wasn't a question. So will this data be used as a matrix, a metric for future funding for events or attractions? Meaning, so let's say the museum, we come in and say, we're gonna, we want funding for Harvest Festival this year. Or is the county gonna come back and say, we're gonna use this as a reporting in, either in conjunction or instead of what we do, our own reporting? So a lot of you guys have been to Harvest Festival, we count people at the door, right? We mark numbers, we mark, we have Scott, Scotts Bluff, Garing, Terrytown, Scotts Bluff County, other, we do the panhandle, other Nebraska and then surrounding states, and we mark down. So have, has, has that been a thought process of, of how we're going to use the data going forward?
So first I want to, you were at the discussion or the presentation for both Zartico and Placer AI, and you understood that the Placer AI study was done on the fly. They had, we had asked for, prior to the presentation, they asked if they could have an event where they could study. They spent a couple of weeks building reports, drawing the geofence, and studying what went on at the All Diamonds last summer. And then on the fly, we asked them to draw a geofence around the monument. And we wanted to see, you know, in, how quickly we could do this. And, and it was in, in probably less than five minutes, probably closer to three minutes, that they drew a fence around the monument, clicked a couple of buttons and said, does this, does, do these numbers look right? And it certainly wasn't a, an in-depth study of Scotts Bluff National Monument like they had put together for All Fields. You know, they, they spent at least a week developing, mapping, running reports, creating, you know? So, so your comparison between, you know, what Placer came up with for the monument in a, in a three-minute, you know, draw a geomap, it's not a, it's not really a fair representation of what Placer AI can do.
But you, Charlie, you said that, not them. They came back and were like, well, what are your numbers? And this is what we gave, and they were like, oh.
They certainly acknowledged.
And then you said.
No, they certainly.
You said that we didn't give them enough time because of, of the, the things you just described.
And they certainly acknowledged that was true.
Well, if I'm doing a presentation too.
Let me, let me address something. You asked, would this be used in conjunction with? And I think their answer is yes.
Okay.
We use every piece of information we can put our hands on to make decisions, right? I mean, that's, surely, the Tourism Committee would do that. That's surely how we do it. But we're not gonna take that as the only answer, and that's law and gospel and... But we're not going to take that as the only answer and that's law and gospel and it's the absolute only thing. It's going to be used in conjunction with other information.
Okay.
I mean, it seems, that seems obvious to me, but maybe it's not for everybody. And how much weight each one of those is given is going to be, again, different per individual as they look at that information. But again, it's, it's just another piece of the pie. I would only say, again, apparently you were at the presentation. And again, the tourism committee was at the presentation. And when it was all said and done, this is the one that was recommended. It was recommended by the tourism committee. It was brought to this board, recommended primarily by Charlie.
I'm not trying to say we're going back.
Okay.
But, but.
But it seems like we're going back through the whole discussion again.
No, no, but these, these are valuable questions. These are valuable things. After attraction that, that relies on tourism funds. So my other thing is, my other question would be as a follow-up and you kind of answered it. But what happens when our data doesn't jive with Placer AI data? Like, what, what I want to make sure is that this is not the sole end-all-be-all to decisions. And what I'm afraid of is what it sounds like, is that this could be. So as, as a person who's on the grants committee, who has helped numerous people with, with tourism grants, who has applied and received tourism grants, to make sure we know what the metrics are if these metrics change. So that's why I'm speaking today is, I'm not trying to say, let's go back as, you know, Jason's right, you guys have already voted on it, it's discussion. But I do think these are important questions moving forward as a tourism partners, especially after, like you said, the last couple of years have not been the best relationships between tourism and tourism, tourism partners and the county. So that, that's where I'm going because I think it is important as we go forward with grants. Not only the committee, we need to know how to judge them, but also then how as a, as a grantee, somebody applying for grants, to be able to, to justify and, and word our grants so that, that we have the best chance for approval.
And to me, it's, it's the story that hopefully all of us will use. Common sense of saying possibly this is new information. Does it coincide with what we believe to be real numbers? And how accurate are we seeing things? And I think that's one of the other good reasons why, a good reason that we only have a one-year contract. In case at some point we say, hmm, I don't know if this is giving us the factual information we need or it seems to be skewed some, it gives us a point to be out or we can renew another agreement. It lets us do that. I think that it would, it'll be a, a good question when it comes a year after using it, where are we at and where do we stand?
And I'm not, I'm not necessarily against it because of the conversation we had. I'm not, I'm not on the tourism committee anymore, but I am on the, the grant subcommittee and I obviously attend meetings because it's important for the museum to have a, a presence there. So I'm not necessarily against it. I just want to know what is our metric now going forward with this instrument that we're going to use? Because, you know, I mean, funds are tight and tight, getting tighter. So I, we just need to know what that is and hopefully we can get together and, and get that settled out. So.
Did you say that only works on iPhones?
Apple products.
That's an iPhone.
Yeah, yeah. And.
So it doesn't pick up any other phone?
Uh-uh.
Any more phones, none of these other?
No. And, and I don't, I don't know what the market share is and I don't know what the demographics of, you know, Apple phones are, tend to be more, you know, younger people versus older people. I, I don't know if I care of that, but, I mean, we have several members of our museum that don't have smartphones. You know, they pop out their flip phones and they're texting like that, which, you know, nothing against it. I just want to make sure that we, we are getting reliable data.
And some people have no phones at all.
No phones at all, God bless them.
And right.
I wish, but then I couldn't play my games. But, but I mean, that, I think that's the, the concern that I have.
If it's restricted to one company, you know your number, you're not going to be.
Right.
You're going to have to go with.
And, and that's fine, as long as we know what those, what the discrepancy is, then we can.
You must know.
Well, we heard that at the last meeting, I believe, and they have some kind of formula to extrapolate that information and, and convert it into what they consider to be more accurate data based upon Apple users versus Android users and other things. So.
But to your point, Mark, I think that's a great, I'm sorry, Russ, I didn't mean to cut you off. But I think that's a good metric that we could use on the efficacy is to actually see people that, like, you know, Harvest Festival, we have people at the gates the whole time. And that's really only, our only real big tourist event besides just being the museum. Our other ones are pretty localized. But I know a lot of other ones do also, take numbers at the doors and stuff, so.
If you're going to get a bed count on that, you'll be able to extrapolate yourself what the differences are.
Yeah, yeah, and we could, we could look at, but yeah.
If you choose to. So, you know, your question of if this data would be used to approve or deny or consider grant applications, there's certainly items that cannot be studied. So like, like the sculptures in the park behind the Civic Plaza. There's no way we could determine who went there because there's sculptures there. Now, but we could look at other things like, you know, the Faulkner State Car Show. You know, did, did, you know, how many people who visited there, how many were from out of town, how many were local? That sort of stuff. And, and see is, is the investment, is there a return on that investment? The circle of Bluff's powwow, I think, you guys get rained out last year?
No, we haven't.
Okay. How many people came to that?
Oh, there was about two hundred.
And there was about a eight thousand dollar grant request?
Um, I can't remember what, what it was. It could have been, because we did an incentive and we did some marketing, but most of it was the incentives or the, um, we took, the museum took care of a lot of the, it's not our event, but we did a lot of the marketing for it. As kind of an in-kind contribution. But I think the same thing you could be said for the museum. Like our impact can't be judged by just one event. You have to look through the whole week and kind of what Becca Gorsuch said when she comes in and she's like, you know, most of our occupancy is during the week. And yes, a lot of that's business travel, but a lot of that is also attractions. And we see that as, as people come through. And we try to get everybody to sign our book, our, our volunteer. Nina contested that, that we hammer in, get them to sign the book. But when you have, you know, five groups coming at once, it's tough to get everybody's.
What I'm understanding is certainly that there's not one piece of information that is one hundred percent correct.
Right.
And we have to just keep that in mind.
Yeah.
We have to use common sense in applying the information to making decisions. And we just can't rely on one thing or one, one item. It's, it's got to be a mix of things and, but no doubt if I was the one making the decisions, I'd be saying, okay, I think I, I think this one, for this event, I think this piece of information might be the most accurate. And on this particular event, it may be something else that I think is more accurate. We had individual counters out there counting. That might make a, make a difference in my thought process.
We're lucky because we've got one entrance. Bloom Fest doesn't have that luxury or the Twenty-three Club doesn't have that luxury. So I'm hoping Placer AI can be something to do that. I was just, I was just hoping that this wasn't the only thing or the major thing that would be determined. Because like the powwow, you know, it started up again. We were a little late getting information out. So, you know, to be able to show the, the tourism impact of it, this might not be realized until year three or four, once people know, hey, there's, there's word of mouth, we're getting more advertising out, then you start to see the people from out of state. But thank you guys, I appreciate the time.
Anyone else?
I guess I just have a really quick question. I know that there was some discussion on extrapolation of the data.
Sure you come up here.
Robin Kenny, I'm back. The extrapolation of the data, is there a way for this program to extrapolate? I mean, I know they're saying that it's just basically data based on iPhones and then they can do a formula or whatever. Is there a way that we can narrow it down and determine how many international tourists we're getting based on the data that they're able to provide?
Yeah, they're, I mean, they're going to show where that cell phone comes from. So if that, that data, that, that company knows where that cell phone sleeps.
So.
So like, and not in a, not very specifically, but if, if that person, that cell phone sleeps in Torrington, it's, it paints a circle around a twelve-block radius that says, here's where that person lives.
So they can say, this tourist, on this state, we had tourists that stayed in this area from this, maybe Germany or England, you know, United Kingdom, Ireland. They can say their, their data originated, you know, their service originated here and they were visiting and stayed here.
Right. That's what I, as far as I understand, now, somebody did make a comment to me that international data might not be available. Who made that comment or am I imagining that? I wouldn't be surprised if international data's not there. Wouldn't be surprised if it is there.
Okay, but it, you believe it can be extrapolated based on what they've told you?
That's what I believe, yes.
Okay, that answered my question. Thank you, gentlemen.
Anyone else? All right, I'm on a, remember, this item is, was intended to be about the shared service agreement between Scottsbluff County and Twin Cities Development. We're going a lot bigger than that and I'm allowing it at this point, but that's the focus here is the agreement between the county and Twin Cities Development. But go ahead. Name.
Mitch Wagers, W A G E R S. So I appreciate the time. I understand it's already been apparently voted on. That was not my understanding from the last meeting, which was last Monday. I think there was more involved than just a yearly, prior year thing that was discussed, but that could be my misunderstanding. Aside from that, I'm just expressing a concern about giving data to somebody that's not in this country. Because I understand Placer AI is out of Israel, is that correct?
You know, the, the fact of the matter is they already have the information, they're just sharing the information. We're not providing any information to anyone. We are getting the information that they already have.
So the only way they can get information is actually through third-party apps. So Placer AI is an SDK that's embedded inside another application. So however that data is being shared, I think it's important, and I'm trying to express something positive here. I think it's important to your agenda if you just want to say you want access to data, but you can't tell anybody, especially me, how that data is used or how it's collected, which nobody has been able to explain to me, even Placer AI. So tracking a cell phone from another state or out of Walmart or whatever the case might be, you have to have particular information to track that individual cell phone. There is no other way around it. You can do it by IP address, but IP addresses float. So there's all kinds of technical details involved in that. And, and I was involved in a lot of this stuff in a previous job. So I'm well aware of how to collect data and manipulate the data and show it and present reports and all kinds of things. But I don't think it's been expressed very well as to what the data actually means. Because if you say, well, if the data is going to show that there's a hundred thousand people that were near the Pioneer's baseball game, it's just a kind of event, right? And again, I'm trying to be positive.
Right.
So what? That doesn't mean you should spend way more money at a Pioneer's game on tourism funds. Because what if, what if people didn't even know about another avenue of tourism? So just using that number to allocate funds, I think is a, I don't think it's the right way to go about using that data. That's my, I think it's important information and I, I respect that. But there is personal information involved that's collected. It says so on Placer AI's website. You can read through their privacy policy. And they have access to share that data with anybody they please outside of these agreements. They may say they anonymize it. Okay, they anonymize it to share to you all, perhaps. That doesn't mean it's anonymized in, in their databases. And that specifically is outlined in their policy. So they're contradicting themselves to begin with. That said, I understand the use of the data, I want to be positive about it, but I think there's been a lax job in explaining how this is going to help anybody in, in this community other than show that a hundred thousand people attended a Pioneer's game or ten thousand people went to the Bloom Fest or however, whatever the numbers might be, I'm not trying to pick particular numbers, understand that. But I don't think that's been expressed very well. And as of three forty-five, when I left, my question to you was, editively, last meeting was, is that a legally binding agreement? And that was when there were two different agreements in play, correct? There was one that was going to be with Twin Cities Development and one that was going to be with Placer AI. That's the second part that changed, in my opinion, about this contractual obligation. Specifically referring to Placer AI, I have, I have no doubts that our courts, our legal system has no jurisdiction over Israel, period. So I don't know how you would have a legally binding agreement with a company that we don't have jurisdiction over. Just going to leave that there. And as of three forty-five, Twin Cities Development couldn't even tell me if their agreement was going to be legally binding. So I'm just a little bit confused. Maybe I'm doing more follow-up than I should. That's where I stand and I appreciate my time. Any questions?
Would you repeat what you said about TCI? I'm sorry.
TCD?
Or TCD, I mean. That, that they didn't think they had an agreement?
No, as of three forty-five this morning, or this afternoon, before I left my shop, I want to be very clear. I did not have an answer, although I had a response, but I did not have an answer as to whether the agreement between the county and TCD would be legally binding.
The county and TCD should be, it's Placer AI that you have.
And at three forty-five, I didn't either, but I relied upon the people that we hired to do it.
I, I.
That's all I can tell you.
I understand, I'm not, I respect my time. I'm not trying to demean anybody or, or anything of the sort, just giving you my.
Well, we try and hire the people to, to take a look at those and to tell us that, yes, this is the agreement we should use.
I understand.
That's what we hire them for.
I understand. Again, you can't control Israel.
Right. I know.
Thank you for your time.
And all the data you're talking about, they already have. They already have it, they've had it for the last twenty years. And so.
That, that doesn't change anything.
Yeah, I know, it doesn't change a thing.
Whether we go into agreement with them or not, they still have the data.
It, it does change whether I participate or not.
And that's, I mean, that's everybody's responsibility.
Whether you turn your phone on or not.
Personal private.
That's right.
Right. Which has to have private information in order for it to be accessed. It's, it has to happen. You either have an IMEI number or something else. It has to happen.
All right. Gene, come on up.
Jean Bauer. In Nebraska, because this is an Israeli company, are there other communities in Nebraska that have contracts with Placer AI?
Yes.
And so are they complying with the Nebraska law that that company is scrutinized? Because anytime we're doing business with a foreign company, Nebraska has a set of rules that have to be followed to determine if a company is scrutinized.
Yeah, I didn't, my, my role with this was not, I, I didn't. Agreement between Placer and the county preceded me, so I haven't.
Right, right.
But the, the agreement between Placer and the county indicates that the entity, Placer, that their address is Covina, California. And there's provisions in that underlying contract about Nebraska law, Nebraska public records law that are specific to Nebraska within Placer's agreement with the customer of Scottsbluff County.
Okay. Just want to bring that, you know, because they seem to be pretty specific and it is completely Israeli-owned.
And that was, that was not something that I.
And that was, you were looking at the contract really between the county and TCD.
And that's what I drafted.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just food for thought.
Okay. Okay.
We've already approved, we've already approved the, that, that contract. All we're doing tonight is, is just splitting it between us and TCD. Right?
Yes, and then there was, just the additional language was specifying, since the contract, the underlying contract is between the county and Placer, was making sure that TCD is going to follow the things like authorize access and, and the use of the data and, and paying their...
The same guidelines that we would go by.
Yes, right, yep.
So it's just redundancy, maybe.
So all, what I did was, in terms of the guidelines the county has to follow, just made sure that TCD is going to follow the same guidelines. So we just incorporated the underlying contract, so whatever the county has to do, TCD has...
We've already approved the, the contract with, with Placer. Unless we go back and change that, that's kind of a moot point, really.
All right.
One more quick question. Jason, what recourse does the county have if TCD would get this information and use it inappropriately under our license with the county?
So the, there's a termination provision that governs that if, if they don't pay or they don't follow, that the county can terminate the agreement.
So does the county then have any liability for inappropriate use by Twin City Development?
Um...
And I guess while you're looking, how would we know whether they were doing something...
We're gathering, I don't know how you can do things inappropriately. I'm taking from you, I can't, I'm giving you anything, I can't give you anything.
But if they have access to the information and we are actually the party to the contract, and then they take this information and for whatever reason, it, it would cause some sort of liability for the county, does the county have recourse against Twin City Development for any underlying liabilities that may arise from their inappropriate use of the information?
Just under the general law, meaning you'd have to have a specific cause of action to go after them for, just like you would against any other party, there isn't any specific contract provision that governs that other than county would have the normal legal recourse.
So they would have whatever recourse available to them if it was inappropriately used? They wouldn't have to necessarily, like, my tax dollars are not going to be used to pay the proceeds of some lawsuit that's brought by somebody's losing their information, having their information inappropriately disclosed by Twin City Development. The county's not going to have an underlying liability issue, that's what I'm asking.
We don't get any of that information. We get, I mean, you get, you get the number of phones around the people, you don't get an idea who the phone was or anything like that.
Well, the main thing with the anonymized information that both parties, mainly with the use, and was it was originally more limited and that was a concern, so it was expanded. And then, like, for example, once, once both county and TCD have that anonymized information, they can share it, they just need to cite Placer as the provider of such information. There are certain things that govern that, mainly that you're kind of giving credit for where you got the, the data from.
Okay.
So that's kind of the main, but if, if somebody were to violate that, I mean, the county would, would have to sue them, I mean, would have to come up with a cause of action that's, that's viable. But the main thing is, is that when they get the information, it's, it's, and I don't have every provision in front of me, but one of them was that, you know, that, that the county and TCD give credit to where they got the information, if they're, like, they had to use, I think, the Placer AI name and logo to indicate that that's where they got the data from.
Okay. So like, if somebody was to hack in through Twin City Development's system and gain access to information that wasn't anonymous, would the county have an underlying responsibility to that person?
So we don't, so the, all the information that we have access to is anonymized, so even if it's...
So there's no way that...
Even if it's on a system, we don't, the information that either we get or TCD gets doesn't have anybody's name or, it's already anonymized. So even if it was on the county's system and I was at the baseball game, it wouldn't, it wouldn't say that I was there. It would indicate a regular cellphone.
It counts phones, I think.
It counts the phones. But I want to be clear, though, yeah, I mean, if somebody violates it, we don't have, like, a specific agreement about damages. If, if we wanted to go after TCD, we would have to find a normal legal cause of action and, and bring it against them.
Okay, all right.
That's a good question.
I just, you know, you never know, with so many people having access to data and hackers getting in through back doors. I mean, every other week, you're getting a notice that some bank had, you know, their system hacked and all your personal information is now on the dark web. So I just wanted to make sure that the county wasn't going to have any underlying...
So the next thing is, and my understanding is, is that when they negotiated the underlying agreement, the initial agreement with, with Placer was, is that all the information that we would have on the system would be anonymized, so we wouldn't have anybody's specific private information. That's my understanding.
Okay, that answers my question. Thank you.
All right. Commissioners, any questions? So, I would entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the shared service agreement between Scottsbluff County and Twin Cities Development.
Is there a second?
All second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the shared service agreement. Any other discussion?
I would just say that the Foreign Adversary Contracting Prohibition Act lists only the China, including Hong Kong, Cuba, Iran, North Korea, Russia, and the Maduro regime. Does not list Israel as a foreign adversary.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
You have five yeses.
So the motion's carried and the motion's approved. We're headed to the backside of the page, but we're well past our hour and a half that I suggested, so we're going to take an eight-minute break and put us back here at 6:56, is what I'm going to call it. Meeting will come back to order.
I'm not ready.
And it's 6:57.
I would like you to know that that is not all on record.
Okay, that's all right. So, we are coming back to order, we're on the, for those of you that have this one-page agenda, we're on the backside. All business is time clock plus and payroll processes. Normally Lisa reports things to us and she's gone.
And Charlotte has been out, so I haven't heard any updates either.
No updates for tonight.
They're obviously not working together.
We need to probably maybe get somebody else to work with. We've been on this five years. When I first got here, five years ago, I had to have that done. Five years. Put time clocks in it.
She's not getting the cooperation from those that are using it.
We need to find somebody else to work with. We get them to supply it from another company. Move on.
Are we, now, here, are you talking about cooperation from the vendor?
No, no.
She, he's talking about our own people here.
Some of our...
And that's something that we can deal with.
Plus, I think there's the issue with the vendor, too.
Vendor as well?
Yeah. On five years, we should have had some sort of result.
Well, if it's issues here, we need to help in every way we can. Okay, and let's try and possibly have a thorough discussion on that when she's here, maybe next time.
I think so, too.
All right, the next item is public comments. The Board of Commissioners will receive public comments on items discussed at this meeting or suggestions for items of discussion at a future board meeting. The Board will not take action on comments presented this date. So is anyone here this evening to address the commissioners under public comments? All right, good. Your name, remember?
I'm Eleanor Schimmick, and I would like to comment about the stars. I campground host, and so many times, people from the east come and they look up and they see stars, they're out at Lake Minotir, and they're just amazed at how many stars we have.
When they get away from streetlights, there's a lot more stars, aren't there?
Yeah, they can't believe, and I, when you talk, was talking about astro-tourism. I thought of these people, like, come out to Lake Minotir and see stars.
There you go.
Thank you.
Any others?
My name's Lorraine, I'm a Bren, and I was not very active and I mistrusted the people who were elected as commissioners until a few months ago, there was an article in the paper where one of the commissioners was stating that he hadn't been to a tourism meeting in a year and a half, and that didn't seem right. It seemed very wrong, I didn't understand. Also commented that he felt that all the tourism should be focused on the people who have the businesses, which, that didn't make sense either, because any businessman, any small businessman, doesn't have a lot of time to deal with all the, you know, major ideas about tourism and bringing in money. And that concerned me. And so, when this came up, I decided to come, and I have been very pleased that Mr. Harris has taken over the position that he has, and it's making a lot of sense. And I'm just, it's been really eye-opening to come to these two meetings, and I'm maybe going to come to do some more because it's kind of entertaining, and it also makes you wonder a lot about what goes on, and people don't come, and not enough people come. There should be 100 people at any given meeting being involved, and that is why. Anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you, we appreciate it. We welcome you, anytime. So, any other public comments? All right, so we'll suspend that portion, the public comments. We'll next go to board and staff reports with discussion. We'll start with staff. Ms. Kelly, do you want to start?
I haven't even thought. I have a drainage election tomorrow.
Okay, drainage.
Drainage district election.
Okay.
Up here, all day.
Okay. All right, so Troy, do you have anything you want to tell us?
I have a chair for a minute.
Okay. Kurt?
I'm glad you guys are sitting.
Thanks, Kelly. I was, I didn't, wasn't able to attend the last meeting, I was in Lincoln, but the Friday before, in conjunction with TCD, Jordan had me and himself and Anthony and two folks from Nebraska Department of Economic Development, and some representatives from DCI, which is a talent attraction company they have contracted with, they're doing a whirlwind, they did a whirlwind tour of the state, different communities to look at different attractions, amenities, businesses, things of that nature. So we did a quick, about a three-hour tour that Friday the 28th with them. We took them up to top the monument, one of the gals is from Brooklyn, the other was from Washington DC, so it was quite entertaining. Then we hit a lot of the different, you know, the Ball Diamonds, we, by the college, just hit a lot of the different amenities and attractions we have around town, and was, was pleased they invited us, and I, I actually took, took them around in one of our transit, our public transit vans, and public transit is usually in the top five. Questions asked by companies, if you're trying to attract a company, do you have public transit available? So, I was really happy Jordan included me in that group. And then, traveled to Lincoln on Monday, we had our legislative day Tuesday, governor signed a proclamation for public transit week, then we had some, some trainings in the afternoon, met with NDOT, and some, you know, trying to clarify some things with our new tier operating agreement, or some ideas going forward to streamline the process. And then Wednesday morning, met with Senator Hart before I came back, talked about a lot of things, including inheritance tax and replacement revenue and how important that is to us, and also the importance for continued state support of public transit, because Nebraska's one of the lowest dollar per capita in funding state funds for public transit, you know, 80 budget shortfalls are getting hit everybody a little bit hard, but just trying to, to make sure that we don't get left out in the cold. Other than that, making another whirlwind trip to Lincoln Wednesday to pick up a van that finally came in, a transit van, so, other than that, everything else is going smoothly.
Kurt, I just want to tell you, don't ever try to get away with anything.
I know.
Did you hear the story?
I heard the story.
Okay. His, I'm standing in the assessor's office last Monday, just before the meeting, Kevin Stalker calls me and says, do we have a white pickup for transit in Scottsbluff County? I go, yeah, and he said, I'm standing out here in front of the motel, and he said, a white pickup went by with Scottsbluff County transit on it. I said, that's probably Kurt Richter. So, walk around from there into his brother Steve's office, I says, your brother in, in Lincoln? He goes, yeah, he just called me five minutes ago, he just got there. So, he'd been in town a whole five minutes, already got a call on him. Uh, he needs to. Yeah.
Gene? Heather? Nothing? Jason? Anything?
Thank you.
All right, we'll go to the commissioners.
Okay, my last airport meeting, meeting, Matt Ziegler, he resigned from the board, attorney's resignation, he wants to travel, his son moved to Germany, they're going to fly out there and spend some time in Germany, spend a lot more time in Arizona, so, Matt had resigned from the airport. Had a cap win board meeting, those are long meetings, by the way.
Oh, really?
Mr. Meyer.
Like these?
Oh, they are, and they're very educational, because they school you while you're there. Then I had a Sears House meeting and just basically paid the bills, they don't, those aren't very long meetings. And then I had Roden Bridge Foreman meetings, and those ones went pretty well there last week, so, that's basically what I had done in Nebraska. Did you hear me better?
Barely.
Barely?
[laughing].
You didn't hear it either?
Did you hear that?
Nope, I didn't.
Megan couldn't hear you.
How about now? Well, these are wondering. You gotta quit eating sandwiches while you're talking. I can do that.
Well, last few weeks, I had the extension board meeting in Bridgeport, had a 9/11 advisory board meeting in the communications training room. We interviewed, I was on the interview board for emergency management assistant, we picked a very capable young person for that position. I attended a 2025 prevention symposium at the Civic Center sponsored by Panhandle Public Health District, and topics covered were PTSD, suicide prevention, the impact of pornography, and emerging drug use trends, behavioral health resiliency, and I got my seven hours of continuing education for that. I attended an ACO district meeting in Bridgeport, an operation cleanup sweep meeting here. I had three emergency calls outs the last few weeks. And then I attended the public information officer training and command and staff training for emergency management at Scottsbluff at the Public Safety Building today. Other than that, I had a thing to do.
Very good. My thing is primarily, I've been trying to see Brenda on a, I try and get to see her three times a week if I can, and so that's been going pretty well. Also, I had the regional governance meeting where we have lunch with mayors, school superintendents, and other officials throughout the community, and so I had that last week. And this week, of course, I'm going to be part of the... I'm going to be part of the tourism meeting on Thursday. And we're anticipating that going from noon to 7:00 PM or so. With about 20 applications for grant money and plus their normal business meeting. And it'll be my first one, and so I'm trying to get caught up to speed on what, what things to expect.
Why are they doing it on Thursday? Don't, did they usually?
Yeah, they had to move it a day for something. Yeah, something that conflicted with someone.
This is just one of their regular?
Regular meeting plus their reviewing the grant money. So I think that's all I have.
I really don't, all my meetings are this week. They start Thursday. I haven't had anything since the last week.
Okay, Charlie?
So TCD will meet Thursday. Nico's been keeping a pretty close eye on the legislative session. It still thinks, Nico still believes inheritance tax discussion is salvageable. We'll see how that goes. The, you know, that's really about all I had on those topics. One thing I did want to clarify is that I'm, I'm always willing to talk. I've, the things that have been said about me in public meetings are often, always coming from people who have not tried to speak to me. The things that have been said about me, about my character, about my bully attitude, and those sorts of things, those are coming from people who have never had an interaction with me. And it's, it's really frustrating. I have never said, I have never said that our tourism efforts need to focus 100% on sports. In fact, there was one time in a public meeting when the tourism director suggested she move to a part-time status to make room for a sports commissioner, a tourism physician. And I have stated in multiple meetings and multiple times to Brenda that it is my desire for her to stay on full-time, to continue to do everything she's already doing. Those, those, those are public comments that I've made. You know, the idea that, you know, there was a period of time when I was not attending tourism meetings. It was not a year and a half. It was a substantial amount of time, but it came on the heels of the sports tourism playbook presentation. And I believed, you know, the county and the city of Gearing paid $30,000 for this consultant to tell us, yes, sports tourism is viable. You can do sports tourism with everything you're already doing. And there was a present, there was a joint meeting between Scottsbluff County Tourism and the city of Gearing Tourism when this playbook was presented. And everybody was on board with it. All the tourism committee members, all the Gearing Tourism Committee members, everyone said, yes, let's do this. Let's capitalize on this. And so at that time, I thought, you know, we're moving in the right direction. And I took a step back from the tourism stuff. You know, there's, there are things being said that I do not support the legacy of the Plains. That is completely false. The fact is, we can use that $6,000 that we paid for rent out there. We can use that money to develop another asset. We are certainly very proud, I'm very proud of what the legacy of the Plains is and what it means. It's a jewel for our community. There's no doubt about that. And the, the legacy of the Plains is a very well-heeled organization. They have a million-dollar endowment. They have over 1.5 million dollars in, they have 1.5 million dollars in cash on hand. They could operate for two full years, $750,000 in unrestricted funds, $620,000 in restricted funds. They could operate for two full years without a penny of revenue, yet their revenue is over $400,000 a year between farm income, gate receipts, and about another, you know, $300,000 to $400,000 in donations from various organizations. It is an asset that we have helped build, and now it's time for us to go build another asset, which, which, which would diversify the tourism in our area, diversify our assets. The more people that come to county, come to town, means the more people will visit the legacy of the Plains. And that's only a positive thing for the legacy of the Plains. The, I would, I would welcome anyone to contact me and call me and have a discussion on these items. Very, very simple conversation. There's, there's a lot of opportunity there for tourism. But I do see, there's also, I mean, there's, there's a lot of people who have been very critical of me, who are now open to having conversations. And it's, it's been enlightening. It's been, I've been, welcome those conversations. I've asked for those conversations.
Gentlemen, I am so sorry to have started back.
So. I see the closed-mindedness is also very much a real thing, so. The other thing I wanted to mention, well, I think I'll leave it at that.
Okay. And you covered the legislation part as far as what you normally talk about, I think. Yeah. Any others on legislation? All right. So that'll bring us down to our last item of executive session that I mentioned early. So Jason has asked for us to have an executive session concerning pending litigation. And so therefore, I move pursuant to section 84-1410 of the reissue of the revised statutes known as the Nebraska Public Meetings Law, that the board hold a closed session with Jason Ocean. The commissioners, anyone else?
Only if Dave Eubanks, the county attorney, indicated that he may be present. If he is, then he could attend, but.
Well, we can include Dave Eubanks if he's here.
Yes.
Okay. For the purpose of discussing, or discussion of pending litigation, I further move that this closed session is clearly necessary for the protection of the public interest and that the executive session for pending litigation matters in clear, is clearly authorized by the Nebraska Public Meetings Law. That's my motion.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second to go into executive session. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote.
You have five yeses.
All right. So the motion's carried. We'll go into executive session. Lisa's not here, so her room's not available. Troy has made arrangements for us to go into the other conference room over here across the hall. Okay? Seven forty, return.
Am I okay to do roll call?
Yeah.
Meyer?
Yeah.
Harris?
Yes.
Knapper?
Yes.
Raisig?
Yes.
Blue?
Yes.
Back from an executive session, I would say that no action was taken. And any other discussion? Hearing none. That's our last item on the agenda. The meeting's adjourned.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
So Ms. Kelly?
Hang on.
Oh, no.
I appreciate it. Thanks.